Almighty and everlasting God, we praise and glorify you. We thank you for bringing us back safely to this chamber to resume our legislative duties. We thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity to serve our beloved constituents in our respective districts. We implore you, O Lord, our God, to guide us as we tackle the serious task of crafting vital legislative measures that need to be enacted in order to address the pressing concerns of our nation, especially those that will promote the well-being of our people, alleviate the plight of the impoverished, protect the environment, make our country more resilient in the face of natural events, and strengthen the fundamentals of the nation's economy. O Lord, our God, like King Solomon, we implore you to give us wisdom so that we will be able to discern what is good in the governance of your people. Give us a sense of urgency as we deliberate on proposed enactments that will make our children and youth better nourished and better educated, our people better fed and better sheltered, the sick and the elderly better cared for, our communities better protected from natural and man-made threats, and our country better secured from would-be adversaries. Almighty God, we know that there cannot be unanimity of thought within this chamber and between this house and the other house as we debate on pending measures before us, but help us to transcend our differences in order to promote the common good. In the words of the Prophet Isaiah, may we come together and reason together. May we engage in debate without being disagreeable. May we clash with ideas in this chamber and with the other chamber but without losing our civility to one another, always bearing in mind the nation's interest and the welfare of the Filipino people. Finally, O Lord, our God, we beseech you to bestow your blessings to each and every member of the House of Representatives, led by our Speaker, our Secretariat, staff and personnel, our families, and the people in our respective districts who sent us here to represent them. All this we ask in the name of him whom the Prophet called Wonderful Counselor, Almighty God, the Everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace. Altogether, let us say amen.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, Honorable Representatives: Avalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adjong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Ataidi, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskub, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buhaín, Bulut Bektang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalau, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Ilizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime Eduardo Mark, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Nimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Nimaporo Siti Amina, Jonicio, Domingo, Duavit, Du Hadi, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudela, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Presnedi, Fentebelia, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Ortuero, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garjola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Dafni, Lagun Sanji, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Huaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Huano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Pleito, Primicias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Regencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulohyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salí, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Mihán, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynold Smichael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Chodoro, Tevez, Changko, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupaz, Totor, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Walmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Toazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Villar, Villa Rasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christanteli, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divinegris, Yu Jason Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 205 members responded to the call.
With 205 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 42 dated January 22, 2024 were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading thereof and subsequently approve the said journal. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the aforementioned journal. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of Journal Number 42 dated January 22, 2024 is dispensed with, and the same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I also move that Journal Number 43 dated January 23, 2024, which were already distributed to the members, be, uh, I move that the reading of this journal be dispensed with and that subsequently approve this journal. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the aforementioned journal. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of Journal Number 43 dated January 23, 2024 is dispensed with and the same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we dispense with the reading of Journal Number 44 and that the same be approved. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the aforementioned journal. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of Journal Number 44 dated January 24, 2024 is dispensed with and the same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills, resolutions, as well as committee reports and communications. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the bills, resolutions, committee reports, and communications.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 9795, amending Article 157 of the Family Code of 1988 on the value of the family home, by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 9796, amending Section 240 of the Omnibus Election Code of 1985 on elections resulting in tie, by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 9797, establishing a comprehensive medicine voucher program, by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9798, providing for the inclusion of senior citizens as central representatives in the Sanggudian, by Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 9799, strengthening the national program for the elimination of tuberculosis, by Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9800, exempting the payment of review fees for board and bar examinations for qualified indigents on their first take, by Representatives Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Poverty Alleviation.
House Bill 9801, renaming Minuyan National High School in the lone district of San Jose del Monte Bulacan to Eduardo A. Abendanyo Senior National High School, by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 9802, providing for the construction of a national highway traversing certain municipalities in northern Samar to be known as San Isidro Lope de Vega Silvino Lobos Road, by Representative Daza.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 9803, converting the campus of the Cavite State University located in Bacoor-Cavite into a regular campus of the Cavite State University to be known as the Cavite State University City of Bacoor Campus, by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon Jolo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 9804, upgrading the LTO office in Batang Ilocos Norte from Class D to Class C, by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 9806, establishing the Waste Mark Workers' Health and Welfare Program, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 9807, instituting a comprehensive national care plan to encourage cooperation, accountability, and research for the education in support of persons with autism, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9808, ensuring that senior high school graduates under the K-12 program are equipped with the knowledge, training, and skills demanded in the labor market, enhancing their employability and competitiveness, creating the Batang Magaling Councils to strengthen multi-stakeholder collaboration and support for their employment, allowing deduction of training expenses incurred for their skills development, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 9809, providing incentives, benefits, and trainings to OFWs investing in business in the Philippines, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 9810, creating a national women's business enterprise policy and prescribing arrangements for developing, coordinating, and implementing a national program for women's enterprise, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 9811, extending the national feeding program to under-nourished children in secondary schools, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 9812, declaring the second Friday of October of every year a special non-working holiday in New Washington-Aklan to commemorate the feasts of Our Lady of the Most Holy Rosary, by Representative Marquez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 9813, renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to the Manila Electric Company, by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill Numbers 9814 and 9815, establishing multi-species freshwater fish and marine hatcheries in certain barangays in Talisayan and Medina Misamis Oriental, by Representative Unavia.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 9816, strengthening the National Nutrition Commission, by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9817, creating programs for incarcerated parents and their children, by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 9818, converting the Conchu Provincial Road in the city of Tresemartires and the municipality of Amadeo, all in the province of Cavite, into a national road, by Representative Remulia.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 9819, to create a healthy food marketing environment by requiring front-of-packaged warning labels for food high in fat, sodium, or sugar, and regulating the marketing of such food to children, by Representative Tan Reynold Smichael.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9820, an act granting a franchise to the Don Orestes Romualdes Electric Cooperative, Leyte One Electric Cooperative, Inc., to construct, install, establish, operate, own, manage, and maintain distribution systems for the conveyance of electric power to the end users in the municipalities of Tannawan, Tolosa, Tabon Tabon, Dulag, Hulita, Lapaz, Borawin, Dagami, Mayorga, MacArthur, Javier, Abuyog, and Mahaplag, Province of Leyte, by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarí, Asidre, Dagook, De Jesus, Kari, and Javier.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 9821, amending the Motorcycle Crime Prevention Act, by Representative Fortes.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 9822, increasing the salary grade for court stenographers of the RTC from salary grade 12 to salary grade 18, Metropolitan Trial Court, Municipal Trial Court in cities from salary grade 10 to salary grade 15, and Municipal Trial Court, Municipal Circuit Trial Court, Choria Circuit Court, from salary grade 8 to salary grade 12, by Representative Baronda.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 9823, prescribing a just and humane code of conduct for resettlement of underprivileged and homeless citizens, by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 9824, institutionalizing the implementation of the government internship program by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 9825, establishing the National Police Clearance System by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 9826, strengthening primary health care in support of the Universal Health Care Act, by Representative Ko Angelica Natasha.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 9827, promoting and expediting labor justice, by Representative Magcino.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 9828, establishing the Disability Support Fund for the empowerment, full participation, and inclusion of PWDs in society, by Representative Magcino.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 9829, granting a franchise to Don Doldren Mindanao Broadcasting System, Inc., by Representative Aquino.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Resolu- Resolutions. House Resolution 1546, Expressing Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives on the Demise of Samboy the Skywalker Limb by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1547, Directing the House Committee on Public Accounts to Conduct an Investigation into Alleged Disadvantages Contract Entered Into by the PCSO and Pacific Online Systems Corporation and the Role Played by the Office of the Government Corporate Council by Representative Barbers.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1548, Urging the Committee on Energy and the Energy Regulatory Commission to Study and Amend the Philippine Grid Code and the Open Access Transcription Service Rules to Properly Impose Penalties and Fines and to Further Prevent the National Grid Corporation from Passing on their Penalties to the End Consumers by Representatives Dagooc and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1549, Directing the Committee on Public Order and Safety of the House to Immediately Conduct an Investigation into the Continued Operation and Proliferation of Illegal Gambling Activities, Particularly in the Provinces Comprising Region 4A or Calabar Zone by Representative Fernandez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1550, Congratulating and Commending Jival Ann M. Raphael for Winning a Gold Medal in the Forty-Eight KG Judo Event, Seniors Division of the Philippine National Games Held at the Olympia Community Complex in Mekati City on December Seventeenth to Twenty-Two, Twenty-Twenty-Three by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1551, Congratulating and Commending Jo Marie Hart M. Raphael for Winning a Gold Medal in the Fifty-Two KG Judo Event, Seniors Division of the Philippine National Games Held at the Olympia Community Complex in Mekati City by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1553, Directing the Proper Committees of the House to Conduct an Inquiry on the Open and Won-Ton Defiance of Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development Officials and Human Settlements Adjudication Commission Commissioners to Implement a Final and Executive Decision of the Supreme Court by Representative Marcoletta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1554, Urging the Government to Implement a Digitalized System for Accountable Forms, Particularly the Digitized Official Receipt and Sensitive High-Quality Government Forms as Measures to Further Enhance Public Service and Foster Transparency and Accountability in Revenue Collection by Representatives Marcos and Barba.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Resolution 1555, Congratulating the MMDA on the Successful Staging of the 2023 Metro Manila Film Festival by Representative Atide.
To the Committee on Metro Manila Development.
House Resolution 1556, Urging the DILG, TESDA, NYC, and Other Concerned Agencies to Strengthen Coordination for the Smooth Implementation of the Amendments to the Sangodian Kabataan Reform Acts of 2015 by Representative Avalos.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1557, Resolution expressing the Strong and Unqualified Support of the House of Representatives to His Excellency, President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr., for his Leadership and Sincere Commitment to Steer the Country Toward a Bagong Pilipinas, New Philippines, through Responsive and Efficient Service for the Benefit of the Filipino People by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Gonzalez Aurelio, Puno, and Other House Members.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate. Message dated December Eighteen, 2023, Informing the House that on December Thirteen, 2023, the Senate Approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2426 and House Bill 8525 on the Proposed Tatak Pinoy Proudly Filipino Act.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letters dated December Fifteen, 2021, and Twenty-Seven, 2023, and January Three and Twelve, 2024, from the BSP Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, Transmitting to the House duly Certified Copies of Several BSP Issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Various Reports Submitted by Local Government Chief Executives and Officials Regarding Their Fund Utilization and Status of Program, Project Implementation of the Local Government Support Fund, LGSF.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports. Committee Report 937, Submitted by the Special Committee on East ASEAN Growth Area on House Resolution 1552. Committee Reports Numbers 938 and 939, Submitted by the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities on House Bill Numbers 4646 and 4644, respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of Representative Lolita Karen Javier of the Representative Second District of Leite. They are from the Municipality of Dagami, Former Mayor Abundio Delusa, Municipality of Dagami Mayor Angilita Delusa, Attorney Alden M. Avestrus, Municipality of Barugo Former Mayor Mayor Rosario Alvestus, Ms. Evelyn Lucico Amor Nacional, and Mr. Saldi Monte, Mr. Speaker.
To the guests of the Honorable Lolita Karen Tanyala Javier from the Second District of Leite, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, today being a Monday, and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the Privilege R.
There is a motion to open the Privilege R. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from Cebak Party List, Representative Eduardo "Brother" Eddie C. Villanueva, be recognized to avail of the Privilege R.
The Honorable Eduardo "Brother" Eddie C. Villanueva from the Cebak Party List is recognized for his privileged speech.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, sa araw na ito ay special dahil pinagdiriwang natin ngayon ang National Bible Day, once-a-year na celebration na pinakikita natin ang paggalang sa salita ng Diyos. Alin sinod sa Republica Republic Act 1111163, ang huling lunes ng bawat buwan ng inero ay itinalaga bilang pambansang araw ng Biblia. Muli, isang makasaysayan at mabuting araw sa lahat po. Ako pinaniniwala na ang pagdiriwang ng National Bible Day sa unang buwan ng taon ay hindi aksidente. Ito'y inadya ng Panginoon upang sama-sama nating itaas ang salita ng Diyos sa ating bansa para mapagpala ang ating bayan. Hindi ligad sa ating kalaman, may mga sektors sa ating lipunan nililibak. Inainsulto ang salita ng Diyos. Kaya dumadaxa ang katako-takot na sumpa na dumating sa ating bansa. Kaya gusto ko pong unahing sandali ang kahalagahan ng salita ng Diyos. Naalala ko ang sabi ng Panginoon kapag may krisis ang isang bansa, ang hinahanap ng Diyos ay 'yung mga lalaki't babaeng nagiging kailangan maging peacemakers. Sa pagkasabi ng Biblia, Sabiatitudes, Matthew 5, Verse 9, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called as children of God." Mr. Speaker, the Bible is simply the Word of God. Ito ang salita ng Diyos na lumalang ng langit, lupang, at lahat ng bagay at tao sa buong mundo. Kasama ikaw at ako, tayong lahat. Mr. Speaker, ito ang salita ng Diyos na nagbibigay buhay. Mr. Speaker, ang Biblia parang isang honors manual para sa buhay natin sa mundo. Dito sinulat ng ating dakilang manilikha kung paano natin mararanasan ang best possible life with longevity and maximum productivity. The Word of God is also a tried and tested life, life compass, Mr. Speaker, and distinguished colleagues, not only for individuals, but even for an entire nation. It's the most reliable anchor for grounding our lives on truth and holistic moral integrity. Naalala ko ang sabi ng Diyos sa Biblia, 'yung may mapandinig, buksan ninyong iyong tenga. Sapagat ang sabi ng balanakasulatan, ang salita ng Diyos ay lampara sa ating mga paa. Ang salita ng Diyos ay diwanag sa ating mga daraman. Why should we believe that the Bible is the Word of God? Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, Apostle Paul in 2 Timothy, Chapter 3, Verse 16, "I quote, 'All Scripture is God-breathed and is useful for teaching, rebuking, correcting, and training in righteousness,'" unquote. Sinabi rin sa aklat ng 2 Peter 1:19, Apostle Peter said, "And I quote, 'We also have the prophetic message as something completely reliable. You will do well to pay attention to it as to a light shining in a dark place until the day dawns and morning star rises in your hearts.'" Verse 20, "Above all you must understand, no prophecy of Scripture came about by the prophet's own interpretation of things, for prophecy never had its origin in the human will but prophets, though human spoke from God as they were carried along or inspired and anointed by the Holy Spirit. No wonder the Apostle John attested to the sacredness and divine origin of the Scriptures in Revelation 20, Verse 18, Verse 19, and I quote, 'I warn everyone who hears the words of the prophecy of this scroll. If anyone adds anything to them, God will add to that person the plagues or curses described in this scroll. And if anyone takes words away from this scroll or prophecy, God will take away from that person any share in the Tree of Life and in the Holy City which are described in this scroll.'" Meaning, lahat po ng hindi nagbabawas o nagdadagdag o nagsumisira ng salita ng Diyos, kailan man ay hindi pwedeng magmana ng kahari ng langit sa kaharian ng Diyos. Hindi po si Brother Eddie ang may sabi nito, ang Diyos ang nagsabi. Clearly, the truth is bright as day. The Bible is not just an ordinary religious book. It is the Book of Books, the only one authored by God Himself. Kaya naman, Mr. Speaker, ang pananumpan natin sa ating tungkulin bilang mga lingkod bayan habang nakapatong ang kamay ng sa Biblia, ay pananumpa hindi lamang sa taong bayan, kundi sa Diyos mismo. This is the gravity of our solemn oath to serve the public. So we better take our duty seriously as we also believe and submit to the Word of God for our own good and for the good of our nation. However, it is not just the holy men of the Scriptures who testify to the Bible's divine supremacy. There are also empirical evidences. Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, ang Biblia po ay binubuo ng sixty-six books, thirty-nine books sa Old Testament, twenty-seven books a month sa New Testament. Sinulat ang mga ito ng higit-kumulang ng forty writers/authors in span of one thousand five hundred years. Most of these authors never met each other, never knew each other. They all came from diverse cultures, eras, periods, geographical contexts. However, in an amazing stroke of divine genius, not a single contradiction can be found in the pages of the Bible. There may be minor differences in tenses or word of choices, but no substantial discrepancies have ever been found in this sacred book. Kaya napakalaking insulto na ang salita ng Diyos ay insultuhin ng sinumang tao. In fact, the sixty-six books complement one another in grand narrative, revealing God's Grand Master Plan for the Ages from eternity past to eternal future. This Grand Master Plan involves the salvation of mankind to the sacrificial death of the Lord Jesus Christ to redeem us from the power of sin and death. Madam Speaker, this is why so many people are willing to put their lives at stake just to testify to the truth of the Scriptures. Thousands of saints have been martyred in the past. Thousands will continue to peerlessly and boldly testify today that the Bible is the very Word of God because they have personally experienced its power to save, heal, deliver, and transform their lives. In our own nation, we have respected and credible Filipinos whose lives were drastically transformed by the Bible. Alam natin, nangyari sa boxing world champion Senator Manny Pacquiao, ang sabi niya, dati siyang babaero, lubog sa sugal, at lahat na ng bisyo, subalit ng kababasa nilang Bible na bago ang kanyang buhay. Kaya parang tumama ng ilang loto ang kanyang missis. Multitalented Gary Valenciano, award-winning actress Conny Reyes, businessman philanthropist Henry C. Junior, also known as Brother Big Boy, Doctors Big, Big, Biggy Bello, Hayden Coe, and the list goes on. Well-known international personalities have also been famous for testifying that God transformed their lives through the Bible. Among them are cultural icons Justin Bieber, Kanye West, Tim Tebow, Stephen Curry of Warriors NBA Basketball Team, Jonathan Isaac, both are famous NBA players who have been testifying they were changed by the Word of God. And of course, Steve Harvey, the famous Miss Universe host, has been proclaiming that he received the greatest gift of God, the gift of eternal life, through the Word of God. Needless to say, I know our colleague here, Attorney Rupus, Congressman Rupus, had a research concerning the Bible, even George Washington, per apreciating who said, "Without the Word of God and without prayers, it's impossible to govern the nation." Even great scientific minds were known to be devout contemplators of the Holy Bible. Among them were Isaac Newton, Blaise Pascal, Johannes Kepler, and many more. The list goes on, Madam Speaker. Millions have experienced the empirical truth. The Bible changes lives because the Bible is the very Word of God. And everyone of us in this August Chamber can experience the same, regardless of our past, regardless of our present. God can save, heal, deliver, transform each of us on a personal level and all of us and all our nation and of course, our beloved nation. This leads me to my final point, Madam Speaker and dear colleagues. The Bible is the book which makes a person or a nation blessed and great. The Bible or the Word of God can make our nation great and reach the sinet of its God-given glorious destiny. Ladies and gentlemen, the Bible is not only a religious book, it is also a manual for good governance. Kaya ito pong aking decision na magbigay ng privileged speech sa oras na ito sa mata ng kasaysayan at sa mata ng eternity, ay hindi lamang para ibigay ang isang simpleng mensahe at paalala sa honorable members of this August Chamber, the House of Representatives, Nineteen Congress, maging sa members ng Philippine Senate at this point of time of history, maging sa members headed by the executive branch, of course, President Bombong Marcos, and maging sa legislative, maging sa judicial branch of our government, of course, headed by the Supreme Court justices led by the chief justice. Ito pong lahat ng itong mensahe kailangan ng samby ng Pilipino. Ako po'y inuji ka ng Holy Spirit na huwag ko nalang basahin itong aking prepared personalist speech bago ako magbigay ng conclusion. Gusto ko pong ipaalala sa lahat. Kung narinig natin ang mga mensahe kahapon sa People's Assembly sa Davao City at sa Luneta, sa Luneta pangunguna ng ating pangulong Bombong Marcos, sa Davao City pangunguna ng dating presidente Rodrigo Duterte. Sa mga taong walang discernment, sa mga taong walang pakialam, sa mga taong mababaw ang pananaw sa kasulukuyan at kinabukasan ng ating bansa. Ordinary lang na parang politikings. Pero ako po habang nakikinig, ilang ulit kong pinakinggan ang mga naging talumpati rohan, the Holy Spirit spoke to my heart. Kung hindi mapibigil ang lumalala na political crisis that will lead to constitutional crisis, ito po'y, this will lead our nation to utter destruction. At naalala ko 'yung sinabi ng dating pangulong Duterte, kapag hindi napigil ang krises na ito, ay hinamo niya ang military at ang PNP. ito, ay hinamo niya ang military at ang PNP. Isarado ang House of Representatives. Ako po'y medyo na shock. Grabe ito, sasarado ang Kongreso. Kaya ako ay nadama ko po ang ating tungkulin sa Diyos at sa bayan. Konting pasyente lang po. Kung hindi ko't sasabihin, magkakasaala ko sa Diyos at magkakasaala ko sa bawat isa sa inyo at sa sambein ng Pilipino. Bihira naman akong mag-privilege speech, lalo na once a year, lalo na sa Bible, National Bible Day. Sabi ng Diyos, ang tao'y nabubuhay hindi lang sa tinapay kundi sa bawat salita ng Diyos. Ang sabi ng Diyos, ang salita ng Diyos ay lampara sa inyong mga paanan at liwanag sa inyong mga daraanan. Kaya, meron pong nakaambang panganib. Pinadama ng Panginoon sa akin, kapag hindi nagkaroon ng intervention ng Diyos sa ating bansa, patungo ito sa tsunami. Hindi 'yung literal na tsunami from the sea, tsunami or political, business, economic, social super typhoon that would eventually lead our beloved country to nationwide chaos and anarchy. At lahat ng pinaghirapan natin dito sa Kongreso for many years could even be suddenly destroyed in the twinkling of an eye. Kaya gusto kong irali ang lahat, lalo ng mga ginagalang kong members ng House of Representatives, regardless of religious affiliation or political persuasion, magkaisa po tayo na irali natin ang sambein ng Pilipino sa isang maayos, matinu at mapayapang pagbabago. May iwasan po natin ang hindi inasahang sudden possible destruction na maaaring tumama sa ating bansa. Hindi inasahan ni Saddam Hussein na mangyayari sa kanya ang kanyang sadest day in life. Ni Kadapi, nila Mussolini. Kaya panahon po para examinin natin sandali ang ating mga sarili. Sa mata ng Diyos, sa mata ng liwanag ng salita ng Diyos, huwag po nating pabayaan ang darkness, ang process of darkness na maghari. Sapagat the God of suddenly says, "If a person remains steep-necked or stubborn, he will be destroyed suddenly, suddenly, beyond remedy." I am a student of history. I used to be a radical activist, intellectually communist. For seven years of my life, I was teaching my college students, "Don't believe in God." Believe in God is just a product of the fertile imagination of human minds for the psychological satisfaction of the suffering humanity. If there is God, how come millions of our people are languishing in abject grinding poverty and very few are living in wealth? That's why I taught my students, the farmers, the peaceman during my activist days. What we need now is unite the masses of our people and advance the national democratic revolution, the only way to establish a just and humane society. I was very sincere, but sincerely wrong. Before it's too late, I was arrested by the Lord through the word of God. Na bago po ako, naranasan ko 'yung sinabi ni Jesus Christ sa John 3, "Unless a man is born again, he cannot see the kingdom of God." Ang born again ay hindi relihiyon, ang born again ay isang personal transaction with God to the saving knowledge of Jesus. At ito lang ang susi para tayong makapasok sa langit. Lahat ay under death sentence, sapagat lahat tayong nagkasala. I pinanganak sa kasalanan Romans, uh, Romans, Chapter 3, Verse 23, "All have seen and come short of the glory of God." Romans 6:23, "The wages of sin is death." Ang kabayaran ng kasalanan ay kamatayan. Lahat tayong may death sentence, not only physical death, but spiritual death that will lead to second death in the lake of fire, eternal damnation in hell. But, the good news is, the gift of eternal life is being offered to every human being through Christ Jesus, regardless of your religion. Jesus Christ died not only for Catholics, not only for Protestants, not only for Muslims, Buddhists, Hindus, Jesus Christ died for all human beings. Kaya po ako, nakikita ko ang krisis ngayon ng marinig ko si President, former President Duterte, ay sobra ang dating sa akin. At in effect, meron siyang indirect order sa military at sa PNP. Paghindi ng natigil itong ganitong krisis, ipasara ang Kongreso. Ako po'y, ako po'y nagulat. Hindi gawang biro. At kaya po, ang aking role ngayon ay pangunahan ng pagiging peace-making, peacemaker. Huwag tayong overconfident. Sapagat baka biglang sumiklab, ang ayaw nating sumiklab, lahat ng ating pinaghirapan ay masayang. Bigyan natin respeto ng Diyos. Ang sabi ng Diyos, ang mga taong ayaw maniwala sa kanya ay mga foolish people, ang sabi ng Biblia. Tingnan mo lang ang kalawakan, tingnan mo lang mga bituin ng ang buwan, ang araw, tingnan mo lang ang mga kamundukan, ang karagatan. Sinabi ng Romans, Chapter 1, "Kahit hindi ka nagbabasa ng Biblia, makita mo lang ang kamahamanghang creations ng Diyos." Maniniwala kang meron supreme being there up, meron Diyos. At kailang makilala natin ang Diyos sa tamang paraan, sa biblang paraan, sa personal paraan, because religiosity is nothing. What is important to God is not religious affiliation, but relation. Right relationship with the living God through the saving knowledge of Jesus who said in John 14, Verse 6, "I am the way, the truth, and the life, and no one can come to the Father except through me." Hindi ginamit ni Jesus 'yung A, ang ginamit niya 'yung D. Hindi 'yung A, hindi sinabi ni Jesus Christ na "I am the way," implying it's only one of the many ways. But Jesus used D, definitely, "I am the way, the truth, the life, and no one can come to the Father except through me." In conclusion, sapagat alam ko, ayaw ni Satanás na marinig ang aking sinasabi ng maraming mga tao. Gusto ni Satanás matangin niya maraming tao sa dagdagatang apoy ng impyerno. Pero naninindigan ako to give everybody a chance to be saved, to give everybody a chance to be an instrument in affecting a genuine righteous governance. Righteous governance is the key to resolve all this political, economic, and social crisis best setting the nation. Why? Because the Bible says, "Righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a disgrace to any people." Proverbs 14:34. Kaya sabi ng Diyos sa Proverbs 29, Verse 1, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; and when the wicked rule, the people mourn or groan." Ako po'y magwawakas sa isang huling paalala. Ang solusyon po ngayon sa ating bansa, wala akong kinakambiang kampo, member ako ng House of Representatives as representative of the Si Mac Party this or Citizens' Battle Against Corruption. O bro, although minsan ako'y mag-interpolate dito, kinansel 'yung time ko ng five minutes. Nung tinatanong ko lang 'yung five billion a day na budget sa blood control, ay bigla akong pinatigil, sabi ko, "Lord, may pag-asa pa kaya ang aming bansa?" Papaano po ako'y tumayo at scrutinize ko ang 5.27 trillion budget every year? Kaya, ako po'y talagang nag-iisip na kung magre-design o hindi sa Kongreso. Sapagat hindi po ako politiko, mahal ko lang ang Diyos, mahal ko lang ating bansa. Naako lang ako ng dalawang beses during martial law, alam 'yan ang mga kaibigan ko, aktibista, radical, pero binuhay ako ng Panginoon. Ako'y binaril, ako'y nakidnap ng unang panahon na mundo, sandali. Pero binago ng Diyos ang aking buhay. Gusto ko lang ishare sa inyo, may isang solusyon bago ako magwakas. Nasa krisis ngayon ang ating bansa, you can ignore it, you can accept it, but it is a fact, it is a reality. Reviewhin ninyo ang mga salita ni President DiGong kahapon sa Davao City. Reviewhin ninyo ang mga salita rin ng ating Pangulo doon sa Luneta kahapon. Magdasal tayo i-discern natin kung saan patungo ang bansa. Sinabi ni Jesus Christ sa John, Chapter 10, Verse 10, "That if preparing to Satan, the God of this world, commit not but to steal the blessings of God, to kill and to destroy, this is the modus operandi of the devil, considered as the God of this world." But Jesus said, "I came to give life and have it more abundantly." Wow, ang ganda ng pangarap ng Diyos sa ating lahat. Naalala ko ni Jeremiah 29, Verse 11, "God said, 'I know my plans for each and every one of you, not to harm you, not to destroy you, not to forsake you, but to bless you, to prosper you, to give you hope and a future.'" Imagine, hindi nagsisnungalingan Diyos, Jeremiah 29, Verse 11. Pero ba't nagkakaginitong ating bansa? Uh, uunlad ng konti, babaksak, uunlad, babaksak. Parang palitaw, lulubog lilitaw, lulubog lilitaw. For many, many years, alam 'yan ang mga apo nating Pilipino na meron sense of history. Santay patungo ko, buddies Philippines. Kaya ako'y, magwawakas po ako sa isang panawagan, ang solusyon po mismo'y na sasalita ng Diyos. 2 Chronicles, Chapter 7, Verse 14, dito po ako magwawakas. "If my people," I quote, 2 Chronicles 7:14, "God said, 'If my people,' not the people of the devil, not the people of the world, 'if my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will heal from heaven, I will forgive your sins, and I will heal, I will heal your land.'" Ang sabi ng Diyos, unquote, "Kung ang mga taong tinawag sa aking pangalan ay magpapakumbaba, mananalangin, hahanapin ang aking muka at tataligod sa kanilang mga kasalanan. Ako mula sa langit, ang Diyos na may gawa ng langit at lupa. The judge of all judges on judgment day naharap ang lahat ng tao sa balat ng lupa. Nobody is exempted. Ako mula sa langit, pakikinggan ko ang inyong mga dasal at pananalangin, at tatawarin ko ang inyong mga kasalanan, at pagagalingin ko ang inyong bayan. I do not condemn anyone because I am a great sinner. I used to be one of the greatest sinners in this world." Nagturo ako sa libulibong estudyante, magsasakama ang isda na huwag maniwala sa Diyos, nang kailangan natin ay revolusyon. Pero nagkamali ako at nagkasala. Ako'y pinatawad ng Panginoon at gusto kong hikayatin ang lahing Pilipino, magbalik loob tayo sa Diyos. Magalanan tayo ng balan na takot sa Diyos, sabi ng Romans, Chapter, uh, Proverbs 9, Verse 10, "The fear of God, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom." Kapag ang mga leaders ng ating bansa'y wala ni katiting na fear of God, walang wisdom. Pag walang wisdom, walang mangyayari sa direksyon ng ating bansa at ng ating lipunan. Kaya, sabi ng Bible, sabi ng Diyos, kung tayo'y magpapakumbaba, magpapakumbaba, mananalangin, hahanapin ang kanyang muka, tataligod sa mga kasalanan, ako na Diyos na may gawa ng langit at lupa. Patatawarin ko ang inyong mga kasalanan, pagagalingin ko ang inyong bayan. Ako'y magwawakas po ako sa isang make-ling panalangin. Ang salita po ng Diyos can make or break a nation. Ang salita ng Diyos can make or break an individual person. Gusto ng Diyos, lahat po tayo, ang conclusion ng buhay natin sa mundong ito ay maganda, hindi condemned by history. Nilin ko po lahat ay yumukulang sandali, magwawakas lang ako sa isang make-ling panalangin. Pwede po ba yumukulang tayo sandali? Naniniwala man tayo o hindi sa salita ng Diyos, ay, ay, nice ko pong ipahabol sa inyong lahat, Madam Speaker and beloved distinguished colleagues. Meron po tayong choice na sundin o baliwalain ang salita ng Diyos. Ngunit kung nice ko pong ipaalala, nice ko pong ipaalala may kalakip na pagpapala kung tayo'y susunod, at may lakip na sumpa naman kung tayo'y susuhay. Sinabi ng Jeter Mate, Chapter 30, "I present to you blessings or cursings, obedience, blessings through obedience, or curses through disobedience." Binamimili po tayo ng Diyos. Hindi ho diktador ang Diyos. Ang Diyos natin nagbigay ng privilege sa ating lahat. Alam ko, marami nagkukwesyon sa isip ninyo. Pakiusap ko lang po, pagbigyan ninyo ang inyong kasamahan sa Kongreso. Dahil ako po'y filoso po ng unang panahon. Kaya ko makapagdebate kahit kahinong unutis si aside. Nag-invest debate in a day ako sa aming university, pinatunayan ko walang Diyos. By using logic, philosophy, magsisip na, nisip, touch, and watch it on the daily, matilis and theory. Gusto kong sabihin sa inyo bago maging huli ang lahat, ang kamatayan ay dumating sa buhay ng tao na parang magnanakaw. Kausap ko madalas dito si John Datur. Nung magtuntas, magpunta sa wake ng missis ko, sabi ni Joel sa kanya, "Congressman, mag-ingat ka sa COVID." Ah, hindi ako tinatablo ng COVID, hindi ako tinatablo ng COVID. One week after, patay. Death comes like a thief in the night. Kung minsan di ka na magigising, nasa kamay ng Diyos ang buhay natin. Kaya ako'y, nagsusumamo lang ako. Hindi ko kayo hihihaka, hindi kayo hihihika kahit kasi relihiyon. Ginagalang kong relihiyon. Kaya nga, J I L T S ay walang tinataas na relihiyon kundi si Jesus, nang sektoryon. Natuklasan ko hindi relihiyon ang makapaglilitas sa tao kundi relasyon. Pag tinanggap natin si Jesus bilang Panginoon, tagapaglilitas ang ating buhay, patatawarin tayo sa lahat ng kasalanan, lininisin lahat ang ating kasalanang namana kay Adama at kay Eva, namana sa mga ninuna at magulang, mga kasalanang nagawa sa isip, salita, gawa mo, nanay, ipanganak hanggang sa kasalukuyan. We will be washed by the blood of Jesus, the only blood in heaven and on earth that has the power to wash away the sins of mankind. Why? Because the blood of Jesus shed on the cross of Calvary is not the blood from Adam and Eve, it is the blood of God put into the body of Jesus when he was still in the womb of Blessed Mary because of virgin birth. Kaya napakahalaga ang virgin birth. Pag itin naunawaan ang lahat ng tao, protestante, katoliko, Muslim, lahat na ng relihiyon sa balat ng lupa, naintindihan nilang kahalaga ng virgin birth, wala na nang di-baptis relihiyon. Si Jesus Christ ang sabi ni Saint Peter, "The only name given under heaven that man can be saved," Acts, Chapter 4, Verse 12. Sinabi ni Saint Paul of the first Timothy 2:5, "There is only one God, and there is only one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus." Sinabi ni John the Baptist sa John, Chapter 1, Verse 29, "Jesus Christ is the Lamb of God who takes away the sin of the world." At si Jesus Christ ang sabing, "There is no any other way to heaven except through him." Na nilin ko lang po, na tayong lahat ay patuloy 'yung mukong pimikit, bago ako manalangin, sapagat ang panalangin ay sasagutin lamang ng Diyos kung nagpapakumbaba tayo. Hindi natin pinapayagan ang ating egoism, hindi natin pinapayagan ang Adamic nature or Lucifer's spirit. Magpakumbaba po tayo sapagat pride goeth before the fall. Nilin ko lang po ang lahat ay 'yung mukong, kung tinatanggap niya si Jesus Christ, kumakatok sa inyong puso. Sabi ng Revelation, kumakatok siya sa puso ng bawat tao. Ang makarinig sa kanyang tinig, magbukas ng kanyang puso, papasok siya, at aha-pung katul, aha-hapong, ang aha-hapong kasama siya hanggang sa eternity. Mula sa past eternity to future eternity, mahalagang kasama tayo ng Diyos. Kaya, sumunod po kayang lahat sa make-ling panalangin ito, sinabi ni Jesus Christ in Matthew 18, Verse 20, "If there are two or three gathering together in my name, I am their midst." Kahinong ko pa naramdaman, narito ang Panginoon ng Jesus. Kaya ayaw ko lang basta't tumigil dahil kahit na may nadidiscern na kung iba ibang espíritu, ay ang pagmamahal ng Diyos ang umiiral sa ating lahat. Yumukulang tayo lahat sandali, sumunod kayo sa panalangin ito, "If you wholeheartedly believe that Jesus Christ became man from being God, begotten son, died on the cross of Calvary, shed his holy blood for the remission and forgiveness of our sins, and he who rose up from the dead for our justification, for God so love the world that he gave his only begotten son, whosoever believed on him should not perish but have everlasting life." At sinabi sa first John 1:5, Verse 11 to Verse 13, "This is the testimony, God has given you and me eternal life, and this life is in his son Jesus. He who has the son of God has life; he who does not have the son of God does not have life, so that you will know that you have eternal life once you believe on the name of the Lord Jesus Christ." Tayo po ngayon, dumako sa panalangin. Sumunod po kayo sa panalangin ito, maging ang sambein ng Pilipino na ngayon ay maaaring nakatingin sa livestream na ito o marеview ninyo sa Facebook or YouTube. Ang minsang nilagyan ng Diyos sa akin ay hindi lamang para sa honorable members of this august chamber, ito'y para sa lahat ng leaders ng ating bansa, judicial, executive, legislative, at maging ang buong sambein ng Pilipino. Sumunod lang po ang lahat sa make-ling panalangin ito. Lord Jesus, I believe you. You died on the cross of Calvary because of my sins. You shed your holy blood for the forgiveness of my sins. I believe in my heart. You rose up from the dead for my justification. Lord Jesus, I humble myself before you. I am also a sinner. Forgive me. Cleanse me with your blood. Come into my heart. Be my Lord and my Savior. Help me to live this life, beginning today, according to your perfect will. Help me to be your asset, not a liability. in the expansive your kingdom and transformation of beloved country the Philippines, to be a blessed nation of God." Marami pong salamat. Ako nalang po magbabakas sa panalangin. Dakilang Diyos na ngayon ay nasa langit ang Diyos ama, nasa kanang kamay ang Diyos anak, at nasa mundong ito ang precious Holy Spirit everywhere. Lantad sa iyong mga mata ang buong Pilipinas sa buong mundo. Bilyong-bilyong tao sa oras na ito, walang panahon sa'yo. Ang karamihan ay lasing sa mga bagay sa Sanlibutan. Subalit ang iyong abang lingkod na ito ay nagkaroon ng lakas ng loob mula sa'yo. Naihiyag ko ang isang simple pero napakahalaga to significant message in rallying our people to go back to you. At tunay na pahalaga ng iyong salita, "Because your word is inseparable from you. No one can separate God from his word and vice versa." Kaya ginagalang namin ang iyong salita sapagkat ay paggalang namin sa'yo, O Diyos. Sa ibang araw, haharap kami lahat sa'yo, walang exempted. You are the judge of all judges. Sa Judgment City of Christ, nananampalataya kung lahat kami papasok sa eternal life, sa eternity. Sapagkat sa araw na ito, sa araw na ito, pinapasok namin ang bugtong mo anak na si Kristo Jesús sa aming puso. Tinanggap ka namin bilang tunay na tagapagligas Savior and Lord of our life. At ikaw may sabi, Panginoon, sino man ang lumalapit sa'yo sa anumang paraan na hindi mo itataboy? Bukasan mo ngayon ang buong bintana ng kalangitan. Iyunat mo ang iyong mahabang kamay, mapagpala, mapaghimalang kamay, mapagpagaling na kamay. Idantay mo sa lahat ng mga lalaking nariito sa loob at labas ng kongreso, Panginoon. Maging ang mga kababayan namin na around 110 million Filipinos in the entire nation. Abutin mo sila ng iyong kapangyarihan. Maging ang mga OFWs, mga kababayan namin na nakaiskater all over the world. You're not limited by distance, space, and even time, Lord. Reach out for them, lay your hands upon them, and release unto them the surging resurrection power of Jesus, the same spirit that raised up Jesus from the dead. Quicken, quicken their spirit, quicken their heart, quicken their soul, quicken their mind, quicken their mortal body, Lord, even their finances. Quicken them, Lord, and make them whole. At Panginoon, dalangin ko po, pagalingin mo ang aming bayan. Bigyan mo ng kaliwanagan ang mga namumuno sa aming bansa. Sino man sila, ano man ang kanilang political parties, Lord, kalimutan nila ang mga personal ah bested interest kung meron man, Panginoon. Maghari po'y pagmamahal sa Diyos at sa bayan. Tulungan mo kami, Panginoon, maging instrumento mo in advancing peace that passed at all understanding. Iligtas mo ang aming bansa sa threat ng tsunami o political, economic, business, and social ah conditions, Lord. Lord, magkasundo ang lahat ng political leaders. Maghari ang pagmamahal sa Diyos at sa bayan. That we should arise over our personal interests at makita mong maghari sa amin ang utos mo na mahaling ka namin, O Diyos, ng buong puso, ng buong lakas at buong kaluluwa. At mahalan namin, mahalin namin amin kaysa isang bansa. Salamat, Panginoon, pagalingin mo pong bansang Pilipinas. Magkaroon ng tunay na pagkakaisang lahat ng sektor, different pillars of the society. At Panginoon, sinabi mo, hallelujah, kapag nagkaroon ng pagkakaisang iyong mga anak, bibilis ang pagulad at pagansenso ng aming bayan. At mararanasan ang aming mga kababayan ang genuine prosperity, peace, and justice, and love sapagkat ang maghahari ang Diyos na lumikha. Salamat, Panginoon, basbasan mo ang lahat ng namumuno sa aming bansa. Bilang pagsunod sa utos mo sa First Timothy, Chapter 2, ipagdasal namin ang lahat ng tao, ipagdasal namin ang lahat ng pamunuan. Pinigdarasal namin Panginoon sa oras na ito ang aming pangulong Ferdinand Bongbong Marcos Jr., ang Vice President Saraduterte, ang Senate President na si Senator Miggs Subiri, at ang lahat ng senador. Ganun din ang speaker of the House, sa aming ginagalang, Speaker Martin Romaldes, at ang mga deputies, deputy speakers, lahat ng members ng House of Representatives at this point of time of history. Amin pong tinataas sa'yo, Panginoon, at tulungan mo kami lahat ay maging kasangkapan mo in affecting a non-nonsense government that is committed to pursue the so-called good governance that will accelerate the much-awaited development, progress, and eventually prosperity of our people. Salamat, Panginoon, basbasan mo ang sambay ng Pilipino, mayaman, mahirap, marunong mangmang. Gumawa po kayo ng himala, ang sambay ng Pilipino'y maging dakilang lahi sa harap ng Diyos at ng kasaysayan. At bago maging huli ang lahat, makakilala kami sa'yo sa isang malalim na paraan, personal paraan, biblyang paraan. At kami lahat ay maging daluyan ang pagpapala sa maraming tao. Aking, aking, pinapahayag na aking bibigay, O Diyos, ang pag-ibig ng Diyos ama na walang kapantay. Ang pagpapala ng Diyos sa anak na walang katapusan. Ang matamis at matapat na pakikisama ng banal na Espíritu'y sumaamin na ang lahat. Lalo na sa aking ginagalang at minamahal na members ng House of Representatives, 19 Congress. Ibuhos mo ang lahat ng heavenly blessings and even the benefits of Calvary. Yes, salvation, healings, deliverance, financial freedom, and most of all, peace that passed at all understanding and joy unspeakable of the Holy Spirit na hindi kayang bilhin ng ano man. Salamat po, O Diyos, binabalik na namin sa'yo ang lahat ng papuri, pagpapa, at lahat ng pasasalamat. Ibuhos mo in a very remarkable way ang new wave of blessings, new wave of victories dito sa halls of Congress na ito, at ang iyong pangalan ay mabigyan ang papurit parangal. Sa mga kapangyariyang pangalan ni Jesus, ikaw lamang, O Diyos, ang tunay na dapat purihin. Sa pangalan ni Kristo Jesús, lahat po'y magsabi ng amen. Palapakam po natin sa lahat, Panginoon. Thank you for your patience and God's best blessings here on earth as well as in eternity be upon you all. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Eduardo's Brother Eddie C. Emmanuel Leva to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, in our move that we acknowledge Representative J.C. Abalos, party list for peace, first privilege.
The Honorable J.C. Abalos from the Four Peace Party List is recognized for his privileged speech.
Madam Speaker, dear colleagues in this August Chamber, to our guests present, at sa lahat ng kababayan natin, magandang hapon po. Today, I rise before you to draw attention regarding our youth leaders in Sangguniang Kabataan, which upon closer scrutiny, a more nuanced understanding of the recent issues surrounding them emerged, indicating a level of complexity not immediately apparent. The establishment of the Katipuna ng Kabataan in every barangay nationwide with Sanggunian Kabataan or SK on its helm stands as our nation's distinctive mechanism to provide an enabling platform for the active participation of the Filipino youth. Members of the Katipuna ng Kabataan, according to the Sangguniang Kabataang Reform Act of 2015 or RA 10742, are Filipino citizens aged 15 to 30 years old, residing in the barangay for at least six months, and duly registered either in the Comelec Voters List or in the Katipuna ng Kabataan Members List under the supervision of the SK Secretary. Bilang pagkilala sa mahalagang papel na ginagampanan ng Kabataang Pilipino sa pagpapayabong ng bansa at pagpapahalaga sa pagpaigting ng kanilang pakikilahok sa mga isyong sosyal-political, ipinagtibay sa ilalim ng ikalabing walong kongreso ang RA 11768 noong May 6, 2022, na nagamienda sa RA 10742. Maliban sa intensyon nitong palakasin palalo ang patresipasyon ng kabataan sa lokal na pamahalaan, pinaluwig nito ang nararapat na pagkilala sa mga opisyal at miembro ng SK sa pamamagitan ng honorarya, privilehiyo, at karagdagang benepisyo. Madam Speaker, bigyan din ko lang na isa sa mga importanting amyenda sa batas ay ang probesyon na nagpapaluwig ng mga kwalifikasyon sa pagtalaga ng SK Secretary at Treasurer. Sa pagtatalaga ng SK Treasurer na dapat ay sangayunan ng SK Members, maaaring pumili ang SK Chairperson mula sa kasapiyan ng Katipuna ng Kabataan, edad labing walo at hindi ihigid sa tatlong taon sa araw ng pagtatalaga. Dagdag pa, para sa SK Treasurer, ayon sa amended Section 10 ng SK Reform Law, dequalifications include, and I quote, "The SK Chairperson shall appoint a Treasurer with an educational or career background relating to business administration, accountancy, finance, economics, or bookkeeping, provided that only if no person meets the requirements can the SK Chairperson consider other suitable nominees." The mandatory bookkeeping training aims to provide the SK Treasurer with practical knowledge and skills in bookkeeping and compassing financial record-keeping, financial statement preparation, and compliance with accounting standards. The profound wisdom in the law is remarkable as it ensures that our young public officials, particularly SK Treasurer, will have the proper and essential training to instill foundational principles of transparency and accountability, especially in the management of public funds. But, as with most things that are new, hiccups are bound to happen. Nitong nakraang linggo lamang ay binisita ako ng SK officers and members mula sa dalawang probinsya. Personal kong narinig, ang isyong kinaharap nila sa hindi pagkakaroon ng access sa pondo ng mga naappoint na SK Treasurer dahil sa hinihining dokumento ng bangko na nagmula sa DILG na nagpapatunay na sila ay may educational background o karanasan para gampanan ang pagiging ingat yaman o treasurer. Odigya naman ay certipikadong nakapagtapos ng NC Level 3 Bookkeeping mula sa TESDA. Halimbawa, sa Eastern Samar, the only TESDA-accredited technical vocational institution that offers bookkeeping NC 3 training is the Samar National School of Arts and Trades. The bookkeeping training requires 37 days of eight-hour daily classes needed for completion, with each batch consisting of only 25 participants, which is the maximum capacity the institution can accommodate. This sole institution now bears the burden of training all 597 appointed SK Treasurer in their province. Since this mandatory training is clearly stipulated in the amended SK Reform Law, government financial institutions have no recourse but to inquire, but to require the SK Treasurer to present their proof of compliance prior to being given access to the SK funds. This has resulted in the inability of many of our SK officers to access their funds. Marami sa kanila ang nag-aalala na dahil sa mga delays na ito, hindi nila na isasakap tuvaran ang kanilang mga plano. May mga natanggap pa tayong reports na marami ang nakakarinig ng hindi ka nais-nais mula sa kanilang constituents, as it seemed they are not fulfilling their mandate as SK officers. Nasisisa sila sa sitwasyon na hindi rin nila inaasahang mangyari. Ang iba pa sa mga nagsabing napilitan na silang maglabas ng sariling pera para lamang maiumpisahan ang kanilang mga plano at programa sa kanilang mga komunidad. When in reality, this should not happen aside from the fact that most of our SK officers are constrained due to limited financial resources. This situation is truly disheartening for our youth leaders as their enthusiasm has been dampened by these turn of events. However, Mr. Speaker and dear colleagues, allow me to take this opportunity to express my deep appreciation to TESDA who promptly rose to the challenge of addressing the issue for SK Treasurer to immediately assume office despite the agency's limited fiscal space. The initiative actually directly answered two concerned, two concerns raised by the SK officers. One, the limited availability of TESDA-accredited schools offering the course since the two-day basic course is conducted online. Second, the SK Treasurer will have a year to complete the comprehensive bookkeeping program at their own pace, providing them ample time to obtain the mandatory requirement while performing their sworn duty as SK officers as well as other responsibilities that they may have. However, Mr. Speaker, may I just stress this point? It is always preferable to proactively prepare solutions rather than resorting to reactive actions or plans once an issue arises. As Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes Jr. said, "The life of the law has not been logic, it has been experience." But I understand that these challenges are part of the so-called birthing pains as it is only this year that we begun enforcing some of the amendments. I believe that this is by no means anybody's fault. There is however, a greater need to engage our youth in a discourse that will ensure that the implementation will proceed as we all have envisioned. Easily, SK officers could have gotten the access to their funds by merely following what is in the law. That SK Chairpersons shall appoint qualified individuals from the pool of Katipuna ng Kabataan Members to fill the SK Secretary and Treasurer positions. Aside from Section 10 of the SK Reform Law, it is clearly stated in the powers and functions of the SK under Section 8 and Item 2 of the Implementing Rules and Regulations. Again, I quote, "Within 60 days from their assumption to office, the SK shall appoint its Secretary and Treasurer. The SK Secretary and Treasurer shall be appointed by the SK Chairperson subject to the concurrence of the majority of all SK Members. For the said appointment, the SK Chairperson and Members shall ensure that the Secretary and Treasurer meet all the qualifications and none of the disqualifications as provided under Section 10 of these rules." But the question now is, how come a number of SK Treasurer appointees do not meet the basic qualifications set forth in the law? First, with all the youth members in the Katipuna ng Kabataan, why do SK officers have a hard time appointing someone who is already qualified to hold the position of SK Treasurer? Had they appointed an SK Treasurer with an educational background or experience in the stated related fields, the only requirements they need to comply with are the two-day online bookkeeping course for SK Treasurer and comprehensive portfolio assessment of TESDA. Siguro, marapat din pag-aralan natin kung may sapat na bilang na mga universidad o lokal na kolehiyo na mayroong inooffer na nabanggit na kurso. Halimbawa po, Mr. Speaker, ayon sa nakapanayam kong SK Federation President sag Eastern Samar, isang tertiary level school lamang sa kabuuhan ng rehiyon mula sa kanilang lugar ay may kursong accountancy or financial management program. Second, to our local leaders, how are we guiding our youth leaders especially in transitioning to their elected and appointed positions? I fervently hope that the process is not being politicized for personal and political gains that appointees are chosen based on their affiliation and not qualification. Higit sa lahat, ayoko man isipin, pero ang kawalan ba ng kwalifikadong appointee ay refleksyon ng paunti-unting pagkawalan ng interes at pakialam ng mga kabata, kawalan ng kanilang pagnanais lumahok sa diskursong sosyal-politika na magbubunsod sa pagtalima sa panawagang manerbisyo publiko. We may also reflect on the opportunity cost due to the delays in the performance of their mandates which may have also lessened the eagerness of the newly-elected youth leaders. Ganun pa man, Mr. Speaker, ngayong nireresolba natin ang issue, maari nating pag-araran ang ilang mga puntong ito. Sa kabuuhan, ilan sa ating mga SK officers ang nakapag-comply at nakapag-appointed sa loob ng anim napung araw? At sa mga hindi nakapag-comply, ano ang dahilan? Saan at ano ang kondisyon ng mga lugar na ito? At ilang porsyento sa kabuuhang bilang ng barangay sa bansa ay hindi nakasunod ayon sa batas? Maari rin nating matukoy kung sa anong aspeto nagkaroon ng pagkukulang o mas kinakailangan pang ayusin sa pagimplementa ng batas. Mayroon bang pagkukulang sa pamamahagi ng informasyon tungkol sa pagbabagong ito sa batas? Mayroon bang kahulangan sa at ang ating Sangguniang Kabataan sa pagunawa sa pagbabagong ito sa batas? Masyado nga bang mahigpit ang mga kwalifikasyon para sa SK Treasurer? At kung malinaw ba o malabo ang mga kwalifikasyon? Mr. Speaker, this initial implementation of SK Reform Act of 2015 is indeed a lesson to us all. To our implementing agencies, we hope that this marks the beginning of a comprehensive overview towards resolution of the issues faced by our SK officers. We can look into putting a just compliance period to the appointed SK Treasurer. Under the amended law, there is a 60-day compliance period to appoint an SK Secretarian Treasurer. Perhaps we can put a just duration for the SK Treasurer. for the SK Treasurers to comply with the qualification requirements. Maari rin paliwigin at specify kung ano-ano ang katanggap-tanggap na educational background at karanasan para masabing compliant ang isang appointee bilang SK treasurer. Dapat nga ba may diploma sa nasabing kurso? O may ilang taong karanasan sa pagtrabaho kaugnay sa larangang nakasaad sa batas? Mga detalye na mga katulong mas maging malinaw at madaling intindihin ang at ng ating mga kabataan na nais maglingkod bilang SK. To all SK officers and members, rest assured that efforts are now being made to ensure that you will be properly equipped and have the tools to fulfill your mandate as public servants. At ang bawat miyembro ng Kongreso, local executives, at ibang ahensya ng ating gobyerno ay nakikinig para hanapan ang solusyon ng issue. As future leaders of our nation, may this inspire you to enhance your knowledge beyond your mandates. It is always commendable when we, as public servants, show initiative. Lalo na, may mga sinumpang tungkulin tayo, and I commend those who are able to raise these concerns and seek ways to solve the current problem at hand. At para sa ating lahat, nakabataang Pilipino, nasa ngayon ako ay kabilang pa rin, huwag nating kalimutan na sa una pa lang ay dapat pataasin natin ang ating kamalayan tungkol sa kondisyong sosyal-politikal at palakasin ang kalaman sa ating mga karapatan at responsibilidad ayon sa batas. As they say, ignorance of the law does not excuse anyone. Know your rights but also be aware of your responsibilities. It is our duty and obligation as citizens of our country. Muli, maraming salamat, Madam Speaker, dear colleagues, at magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I acknowledge Honorable Congressman Bordado for his manifestation.
The Honorable Congressman Bordado is recognized for his manifestation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will just deliver a very brief manifestation. I wish to acknowledge the privileged speech of my colleague, Congressman Abalos, and I am commending him for focusing on inadequacy in the Sanggunian Kabataan system of governance. I believe, Madam Speaker, that this is also prevalent in the Barangay Council itself. So we must do something, we must be prepared to address this concern because according to a Tagalog saying, and I quote, Madam Speaker, "Ang mabuting pamamahala sa barangay nagsisimula." Good governance starts at the barangay level, Madam Chairman. So thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Congressman Abalos.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Abalos to the Committed Rules for its Appropriate Action.
There is a motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Bordado and the manifestation of the speech of the Honorable Abalos and the manifestation from the Honorable Bordado. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to acknowledge the guests of Ang Probinsyano Partilist, Representative Alfred de Los Santos. They are Mrs. Maria Garcia Mercedes de Los Santos, former Representative Edward de Los Santos, and Ms. Yolanda Santos.
The guest of the Honorable Alfred de Los Santos is welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd also like to acknowledge the guests of Honorable Filimon Espares of the CoopNATCO Partilist. They are the officers of the Southern Negroes Agri Fisheries Multipurpose Cooperative, or SONAMCO. They are Loella Amis, Nanita Makabali, Estela Cortez, and Emma Sable de La Serna.
To the guests of the Honorable Espares from the CoopNATCO Partilist, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Lady Representative Franz Castro of Act Teachers Partilist to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized to deliver her privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Magandang araw, Madam Speaker, sa mga kapwa-kinatawan at sa ating mga kababayan. Naipasa na po ang General Appropriation Act para sa taong 2024. Ngunit nasaan na po ang sinasabi ng Department of Budget and Management na pag-aaral para sa salary increase. Bakit nabawasan ang kakarapot na budget para sa compensation adjustment? Buti pa ang budget ng COMLEC sa conduct of supervision, election, referenda. Recall votes and plebe seats ay nadagdagan ng 12 billion. Pero ang budget sa salary increase, saan napunta? Ngayong pagpasok ng taong 2024, maugong ang balita ng CHACHA at pagpapirma para sa People's Initiative kung saan-saan po hinuhugot ang pondo para rito. Malaki ang naibawa sa kakarapot na pondo para sa compensation adjustment. Napunta ba ito sa CHACHA? Batay sa datos, malaki ang naibawa sa compensation adjustment ng mga kawanee sa gobyerno. Kasama na rito ang mga guro. Mula 89.91 billion pesos sa National Expenditure Program ng 2024 ay naging 19.91 billion na lamang ito sa General Appropriations Bill ng maipasa ito dito sa House of Representatives hanggang sa natapisan pa rin sa GAAN ng 2024. Naging 1.01 billion na lang ang compensation adjustment. So take note, mula doon sa proposal na 18 billion, ay naging 1 billion na lamang 'yung para sa mga compensation adjustment budget. Kung pagbabatayan natin ang datos ng Civil Service Commission noong June 2023, mayroong 1.75 million career service personnel sa gobyerno. Kung paghahatian nila ang 1.01 billion, bawat isa ay makatanggap lamang ng 48 pesos kada buwan na umento sa sahod, o 576 pesos and 21 centavos kada taon. Hindi pa kasama rito 'yung non-career personnel. Kahit pa sabihin na mayroong 41.84 billion unprogram appropriations ng GAAT 2024 para sa compensation adjustment, ito ay kakarapot pa rin na paghahatian ng lahat ng kawanee at hindi sigurado kung mapupunduhan ito. At ang malaking tanong ng kinatawang ito, na kung priority ng ating gobyerno, ang ating mga government employees, ang mga teachers, at ang sweldo ng ating mga government employees, bakit inilagay ito doon sa unprogram appropriations ng GAAT 2024? Natapos na po ang SSL 5 na may barya-baryang salary increase para sa mga kawanee ng gobyerno at mga guro. Kung kaya't patuloy ang panawagan ng sektor na sa lalong madaling panahon ay magkaroon na ng salary increase, matagal ngang binabaliwala ang mga guro at education support personnel sa usapi ng benepisyo at sahod. Hindi nakabubuhay ang sahod. Hindi makatao ang kondisyon sa paggawa sa laki ng class size, siksikan na classroom, kakulangan sa mga pasilidad, instructional materials, at iba pa. Maraming mga pinagagawa sa mga guro na hindi naman teaching-related task. Idagdag pa 'yung mataas ng mga bilihin at implasyon talagang hindi nasasapat sa pamilya ng mga guro ang kanilang kasalukuyang sahod kumpara sa ibang mga professional. Nasa 1,100 kada araw, o 33,000 pesos kada buwan ang kailangan ng family ang family living wage para mabuhay ng maayos. Para na po, marami na ang nananawagan ng 33,000 pesos bilang minimum wage sa ating mga government employees. Batay sa survey na isinagawa ng SWS noong December 8 to 11, 12.6% ng respondents ang nagsabi na nakaranas ng involuntary hunger noong fourth quarter ng 2023. Tumas din ang hunger rate ng mga self-rated poor families mula 7.7 noong September, patungong 20.1% noong Desembre. Habang sa latest OCTA survey noong December 10 to 14, 73% ng respondents ang nagsasabi na dapat nakapokus ang gobyerno sa pagkontrol ng pagtaas ng basic goods and services. Habang nasa 34% ng mga respondents, opang apat ang usapi ng pagtaas ng sahod, at ang pinakahuli ay 1% lamang ng mga respondents ay naniniwala na urgent issue ang CHACHA. Nakikita natin na hindi CHACHA ang gusto ng mamayan, mas pinaproblema nila ang taas ng presyo ng bilihin sa kabila ng kakaunti nilang sahod. Sa sektor naman ng edukasyon nananawagan na dapat na ang teacher one o salary grade 11 ay nasa 50,000 na ang compensation na talagang resunable dahil sila ay overworked, underpaid, at nasa unsupported conditions. Isinusulong din natin sa lahat ng kawinee na gobyerno, at ang panawagan nila ay 'yung 33,000 pesos monthly minimum salary para sa salary grade one. Habang sa ating mga nurses naman ay 50,000 per month. Muli, nananawagan ang kinatawang ito ng Act Teachers Partilist na sa lalong madaling panahon dapat dinggin na ang panawagan para sa mas mataas at nakabubuhay na sweldo para sa mga guro at kawanee ng gobyerno. Huwag na nating pagtuuna ng pansin ang CHACHA na wala namang maidulot na kagat na ikabubuti ng ating mga mamayan. Salary increase, hindi CHACHA. So ito lang po, Madam Speaker. Muli, magandang hapon sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Franz Castro to Committed Rules for its Appropriate Action.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour.
There is a motion to extend the privilege hour. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize Representative Arlene de Brosas o Partilist Gabriela for her privileged speech.
The Honorable Arlene Brosas is recognized for her privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Ngayong araw po ay tumitindig ang Gabriela Women's Party para sa isa, sa mga pangunahing issue na kailangang tugunan na sa lalong madaling panahon. Ito ang nanatiling mataas na kaso ng mga namamatay na babae dahil sa panganganak. Sa buong mundo, isinisigaw na dapat walang babae ang namamatay habang nagbibigay buhay. Ngunit malayo ito sa realidad ng tunay na kalagayan ng mga kababaihan. Batay sa pag-aaral ng United Nations na trends in maternal mortality mula taong 2000 hanggang 2020 sa ibat-ibang bansa, nasa dalawang babae ang namamatay kada dalawang minuto mula sa preventable causes kaugnay ng pagbubuntis at panganganak. Ayon sa World Health Organization, WHO, ang mataas na bilang ng maternal deaths sa ilang panig ng mundo ay sumasalamin sa hindi pagkakapantay-pantay sa access sa dekalidad na serbisyo ang pampubliko at nagpapakita ng puwang sa pagitan ng mayaman at mahirap. Ang maternal mortality rate, MMR, sa low-income countries noong 2020 ay 430 kada 100,000 live births. Samantalang nasa 12 lamang ito kumpara sa high-income countries. Napakalayo mula 430 to 12 para sa mga matataas o mayayamang bansa. Mula 2016, pinairal na ang pinaggaisahang target para pabilisin ang pagbaba ng maternal mortality sa taong 2030 sa ilalim ng Sustainable Development Goals, or SDG. Kasama na dito ang pagpapababa ng global MMR na target na maging mas mababa sa 70 kada 100,000 live births. At walang bansa ang may MMR na may higit sa doble ng global average. Ang pinakahuling tala ng global MMR ay 223 kada 100,000 live births. Kaya para mapababa ito sa 70, mangangailangan ang tau ng reduksyon o pagbaba na rate na 11.6%. Sa Pilipinas, pinakahuling datos nagtala ng 2,478 na namatay dahil sa maternal causes ang Philippine Statistics Authority noong 2021. Kung ito ang pagbabatayan, ang maternal mortality rate ay nasa 189 kada 100,000 live births. Ito ay mas mataas pa ng 119 kesa sa 70 na global target. Sa katunayan nga, dapat lang asamin natin na wala na talagang mamatay dahil sa pagbubuntis at panganganak or zero maternal deaths. Sa aming pakikipagtala kayan, kasama ang PLCPD at ilang experts mula sa UN Population Fund, or UNFPA, hingil sa maternal mortality rate na bigyang diin na kalakhan ng sanhi ng maternal deaths ay preventable o maiiwasan naman dahil may mga medical at healthcare solutions na available para sa mga ito. Ayon sa Philippine Health Statistics, ang mga pangunahing sanhi ng registered maternal death ay mga kaso ng maternal infectious at parasitic diseases: eclampsia, pre-eclampsia, at postpartum hemorrhage. Batay rin sa 2022 National Demographic and Health Survey, malaking proporsyon ng maternal at neonatal deaths ay nangyayari sa unang 48 hours matapos ang delivery. Kaya naman, ilan sa mga dapat iyakin ay ang dagliang postnatal care para sa ina at anak upang dagliang magamot ang anumang komplikasyon mula sa panganganak? Kaya kailangan ang postnatal check sa unang dalawang araw matapos ang panganganak. Nag-iiba-iba kada rehiyon ang nagtala ng postnatal check mula 45% sa Barm hanggang sa 90% sa Northern Mindanao. Susi ang serbisyo at karapatan sa kalusugan para sa pagtitiyak ng buhay ng magiging ina at ipapanganak. Kung mayroon lamang mas mainam, libre, dekalidad, at abot kamay na maternal at reproductive health services sa bansa, mas maraming buhay ang masisigurong ligtas. Noong deliberasyon ang kapulungang ito tungkol sa 2024 budget, kinwestion ng Gabriela Women's Party ang kawalan ng hiwalay na line item para sa Family Planning and Reproductive Health or FPRH na isinama ng DOH or Department of Health sa ilalim ng Family, Health, Immunization, Nutrition, and Response Parenting, FHINRP. Matagumpay nating iginiit, nag-iit na dapat may separate line item ang para sa reproductive health at may pondong itong nasa 750 million para sa 2024. Sa kabuan, maliit pa rin ang DOH budget kumpara sa malaking pangangailangan ng buong sektor ng kalusugan. Substansyal na dagdag pondong ang dapat mailaan dito sa mga susunod na taon. Isa pang maaring gawin upang mababaan at tuluyang mawakasan ang maternal deaths ay ang pagsisikap kung paano maiiwasan ang mga unintended pregnancies na nangyayari kapag wala sa plano na magkaroon pa ng anak, wala sa oras, o kaya naman ay mas maaga sa hinahangad na panahon. Sa ulat ng UNFPA, 71 sa kada 1,000 kababaihan na nasa edad 15 to 49 ang dumaan sa unintended pregnancy mula 2015 hanggang 2019. 51% naman ng lahat ng mga pregnancies ay unintended. Ito ay halos sing laki ng global average. Isa rin tayo sa mga bansa na higit sa 20% ng mga first births o unang panganganak ay sa babae na wala pang 18 years old. Sa panahon ng mga kalamidad at iba pang emergencies, may proyekto ang UNFPA na Women's Health on Wheels, WOW o Mobile Birthing Facility na nagbibigay ng adhok, maternal, at reproductive healthcare sa kababaihan. Isa ito sa mga pwedeng pag-aralan at isagawa ng national at local government upang palawakin pa ang akses sa maternal at reproductive healthcare services. Malaking bagay ang full implementation ng reproductive health law upang matugunan ang mga pangangailangan para pababain ang maternal mortality at tiyakin ang kalusugan ng lahat. Dagdag pa rito ang matagal na nating ipinapanawagan na pagsasabatas ng Prevention of Adolescent Pregnancy Bill. Pagtibayin ang implementasyon ng mga batas ang ayon sa karapatan sa kalusugan at palakasin ang pangkahalatang sistema ng public healthcare sa bansa. Ibasura ang mga neoliberal na patakaran ng privatizasyon at commercialisasyon na healthcare na naglalayo sa mga moralita at naghihirap na kababaihan ng dapat niyang natatamasang serbisyo. Sa pangkabuan, tinatawagan natin ang kapwa, kababaihan, at sambayanan na tumindig at lumaban para sa karapatan sa kalusugan at pagtitiyak ng akses sa dekalidad na serbisyon pangkalusugan. Kailangan ang ating kolektibong aksyon upang maningil sa matagal ng inaksyon at pagpapabaya sa mga ugat ng kawalan ng maayos na serbisyon kalusugan sa bansa. Matinding kahirapan, korapsyon, kawalan ng lupa, trabaho, at kabuhayan, at iba pang suliranin ng bayan. Kayang-kaya natin itong ipagtagumpayan sa ating sama-samang pagkilos. Muli, ang Gabriela Women's Party ay kasama ng mga kababaihan at mamayan ng buong daigdig na nananawagan na dapat walang babae ang namamatay habang nagbibigay buhay. No woman should die giving life. Ipaglaban ang kalusugan, kabuhayan, at karapatan. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of Honorable Christopher Coco Yap. They are the following: Rosalita Tiran, Marilyn Saabadera, Manolo Sierra, Azucena Sherbo, Enzo Manolo Sherbo, Francis Jesse Q. Sherbo, Mark Andron Banjola, Child Sales Manager of Black Bear Security Bank.
To the guests of the Honorable Christopher Sonoco M. Yap from the Second District of Southern Leyte, from the municipality of Makrohon and so good, Southern Leyte, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege hour.
There is a motion to suspend the privilege hour. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up an item in the business for the day, House Resolution 1557, and for this purpose, the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure.
The Secretary just directed to read the title of the measure.
House Resolution 1557. A resolution expressing the strong and unqualified support of the House of Representatives to His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. for his leadership and sincere commitment to steer the country toward a Bagong Pilipinas, new Philippines through responsive and effective and efficient service for the benefit of the Filipino people.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Senior Deputy Speaker, the Honorable Don Gonzalez, for his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Senior Deputy Speaker, Don Gonzalez, is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On June 28, 2024, at the Carino Grandstand, City of Manila, His Excellency Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr. led the kickoff rally and launch of the Bagong Pilipinas. A transformative initiative and call for a deep transformation in all areas and sectors of the society where accessibility of government programs, services, and financial support programs shall be vocally centered on every eligible and qualified Filipino citizen. President Marcos changed his inauguration in June 2022 and into the threshold of his third year in office as the Chief Executive of the Philippines has remained steadfast, unrelenting and determined in working towards his primordial goal of improving the lives of his countrymen and his noble aspiration of leading a strong and prosperous nation. Spearheaded by President Bongbong Marcos, Bagong Pilipinas is envisioned to foster a unified commitment towards nation-building, the pursuance of excellence and innovation, and the upliftment of the every life of every Filipino of the Bagong Filipino. This noble endeavor aims to engrain in every civil servant the present administration's brand of governance and leadership that centers on a principled, accountable, and dependable government reinforced by unified institutions of society. With the Philippine Development Plan, the PDP, of 2023 to 2028, as the country's guiding framework, the Marcos administration is determined in carefully uncertaining what policies must be implemented so that this can contribute to the overall upliftment and growth of our country. Madam Speaker, the Bagong Pilipinas campaign is indisputably a call for unity, a rallying cry for every Filipino to come together, transcend differences, and work hand in hand for a brighter and more prosperous life for the young and future generations. Government leaders, including the House leadership, who showed up during the June 28, 2024 rally, beg to one and all our unwavering support to the noble goals of our president. Our presence during the Bagong Pilipinas event conveys a shared commitment to our ultimate trust towards nation-building. Such as each and every Bagong Filipinos' personal commitment to positive change is a vital fortress towards a strong and progressive nation. Thus, for our part, Madam Speaker, the House of Representatives has continuously passed corresponding measures to improve governance, sustain the country's economic stability, equitably distribute the country's economic gains and achievements, and ultimately to manifest this August chamber the unwavering and paramount support the aspirations of President Marcos in resuscitating our economy from the economic slump brought about by the pandemic and sustaining economic recovery ins on the unified collaboration of all branches of government and citizenry. At this juncture, Madam Speaker, let me urge each one of you to support the adoption of House Resolution Number 1557 expressing the strong unqualified support of the House of Representatives to His Excellency President Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr. for his leadership and sincere commitment to steer the country toward a Bagong Pilipinas or the new Philippines through responsive and efficient service for the benefit of the Filipino people. From this point onwards, let us all march as one towards a Bagong Pilipinas. Dakalpong salamat. Maraming salamat po sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 1557.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 1557. Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1557 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel of Party List Kabataan for a manifestation.
The Honorable Manuel is recognized for his manifestation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. After this body adopted that resolution, Madam Speaker, I as a young representative and as a Filipino would like to point out that in the context of what is happening in our country right now amid political bickering and exchange of the raids, Madam Speaker, ang nagsasuffer po dito ay hindi actually 'yung mga personalities who are involved, but it is the Filipino people who would suffer demands such as increase in wages, control of prices. Yun po ang nagsasuffer, no? Hangga't merong mga ganitong nangyayari. Madam Speaker, the cost of these exchanges or neglect of real action on price of rice or gasoline, pagpapababa ng presyo ng bigas, the livelihood of our jeepney operators and drivers, response to calls for salary increase of our workers, teachers, and other government representatives. Kalagayon po ng ating mga magsasaka, mga mangisda na hindi makapaghanap buhay sa West Philippines at ang pagbigil din sa foreign intervention sa ating bansa. Kaya Madam Speaker, beyond slogans and beyond these kinds of exchanges, Madam Speaker, all the more na dapat ay mangyari ang long-term and sustainable na pagbabago sa ating bansa through substantial socio-economic reforms and by empowering our people through their participation in our political processes. We need to end the generations and decades of suffering brought about by systemic neglect and how power has been very limited to a few in our country. Yun lang, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I now move that we recognize the Honorable Robert A. Barberz of the Second District of Surigao del Norte for his privileged speech.
The Honorable Robert A. Barberz from the Second District of Surigao del Norte is recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, this representation would like to rise on a question of personal and collective privilege where I am certain that majority of the members of this August chamber would like to express their sentiments on the current issues that are going around in the country today. More particularly, Madam Speaker, is the issue of People's Initiative. The House has been at the end of accusations, attacks, and insults coming from our friends from the so-called upper house. Madam Speaker, let me start by saying, how do I envy? Let me count the ways. First, among all elected government officials, with the exception of the Vice President, only the senators have two terms of six years each, thus a maximum of 12 years. Second, you don't have to run, the senators don't have to run for reelection every three years. Third, in their elections, they have 12 chances of winning, there being 12 slots to vie for. Fourth, in the midterm, they may run for president or vice president without losing their seats even if they lose the elections. Fifth, they may share exactly the same position with unlimited number of family members. And sixth, they chair more than one committee since their number is quite small compared to the lower house. Seven, they can have a so-called R and R in the House of Representatives for three years after their term limits expires and automatically getting the post of Deputy Speaker if they are if they become member of the House of Representatives. You see, Madam Speaker, these are the so-called most privileged kids around the block, so to speak. From all indications, these privileges got into their heads and they thought that they are all above everybody else, including other government officials and the people whom they now call by the names like bayaran, ignorant, downright stupid. When they even said in the vernacular, Madam Speaker, that hindi na iintindihan ang pinipirmahan at basta lalamang humipirma dahil nababayaran. They have not they have not only insulted everyone, Madam Speaker, but have already shown the arrogance that not even God has displayed towards his people. Now that they feel threatened, they call us names. What have we done to you to deserve this treatment? The People's Initiative, whether started by the people or a people's organization, an informal or formal aggravation of people or even the congressman or congressmen is of no issue. We are all part of the people unless the senators consider themselves to be gods. Ordinary people, government officials, elected officials, all have the same rights under the law, assuming for the sake of argument that we are involved in this initiative. So what, Madam Speaker? So what, Madam Speaker? At least with People's Initiative, ordinary folks and government officials are together in pushing for reforms. Compare it to the ConAs, where only you, the senators, and us in the House of Representatives are involved. Then later on, smack our agreement in the throats of the people and ask them a question of yes or no during the plebiscite. At least and at last in People's Initiative, the people on the ground are consulted and their consent freely solicited and given. Now you launch your People's Withdrawal Initiative. That is all right, and that is your right as well. Nobody will ever curtail that right of yours. But you questioning us and lecturing us on how we must discharge our duties and exercise our rights is an affront that compels us to respond, albeit diplomatically. You say that this People's Initiative has disrupted the legislative work. We do not know with you. As far as the House is concerned, we have finished all the priority measures listed in the Sona and LEDAC priorities. At this juncture, Madam Speaker, dear colleagues, allow me to say that we only have high praises to Senate President Miguel Zubiri for doing his very best to keep up with us, for his enviable work ethic, his ability to gather consensus and strong desire to push for economic reforms. And let me state for the record that we believe in his leadership. Again, some of the senators keep asking the President to intervene and stop the House. Have you lost your minds? We are in a presidential democratic government where there are three equal branches. If you are saying that the President can intrude into the independence of any branch, then what is your duty? If you think this is normal, why don't you ask the President to stop you instead from insulting everybody else and get down to work? Finish your work. Funny how you have advocated the same call to amend the Charter when you were still among us, former members of Congress, and the people. Funny that when we pushed you up and got to perch on a tiny branch a little above us, you have forgotten about us. So you see, it's the other way around, Madam Speaker. It is not the people selling their future. It is the senators selling them to keep their branch. In spite of all this, Madam Speaker, we still appeal to our very lucky, lucky, if I may emphasize, lucky colleagues up there in the upper branch, as you say, to listen and to open their minds to this People's Initiative of at least 12% that aims to resolve our disagreement on the mode to amend the Charter. While the people have the right to propose, you have the right to oppose in the plebiscite. Campaign all you want to defeat the proposal in the plebiscite, but do not shoot it down while the people are legally exercising their right. Rest assured that while political provisions are equally important to be reviewed, especially the political dynasty provision, the House leadership's commitment stands that there is no such thing as abolition of the Senate, extension of all term limits across the board, and least of all the harebrained idea of Marites that is of no election scenario. Madam Speaker, this is my expression and perhaps an appeal to our colleagues and friends in the Senate to take a second look. Look at the objectives that we wish to attain in amending the economic provisions of our Constitution. Gaya po ang sinabi ng ating Pangulo, tayo po ay nasa globalized era sa ngayon at hindi po tayo dapat magpahuli. Tingnan po natin, pag-aralan po natin, susugan natin ang economic provisions na kung saan siya ang magdadala sa toong development dito sa ating bansa. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Barberz. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the Representative in the First District of Iloilo, Congressman Janet Green would like to interpolate Congressman Robert Barberz.
The Honorable is recognized to interpolate our response.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, distinguished colleagues. Madam Speaker, it pains me to hear that the Honorable Congress has been at the receiving ends of criticisms, most of which are unfounded. And I commend the Honorable Ace Barberz for standing up, defending the institution, and putting a voice, in the real voice of our people. Napakasakit po, Madam Speaker, na kapag tuming merong masamang nangyayari, etila parang kasalanan ng Kongreso. With that, Madam Speaker, may I inquire from the distinguished Ace Barberz, is it a mortal sin to listen to our people?
Madam Speaker, my distinguished colleague, it is our primordial duty to listen to the voice of our people. Yan po ang ating trabaho. Tayo po ay nag-oath at sumumpa na tayo po ay makikinig para po tayo makapagsirbisyon ng tama sa ating mga kababayan. It is not a mortal sin.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, masakit mang isipin, ngunit naririnig natin yun at tila parang 'yung iba eh nahihiyang sumagot. Pero karapat-dapat bang sabihin 'yung mga salitang, pardon me for this, but we've been hearing demonio, binibili 'yung mga tao, binibili 'yung mga pirma. Madam Speaker, in the several years that the Honorable Ace Barberz has been standing up as a proud Filipino, can he say na ang isang Filipino ay pwedeng tawaging bayaran? Na isang Filipino ay pwedeng sabihing baka mang-mang dahil pumipirma ng hindi niya alam? Madam Speaker, what is the context of these accusations? I am not hurt because I'm a member of Congress. I am more hurt kasi merong iba na napakababa ng tingin sa ating mga Filipino. What can the Honorable Ace Barberz say to this, Madam Chair?
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, ako po ay sumasang-ayon sa iyong opinyon na ito po ay isang malaking insulto para pangalanan at tawagin nating bayaran o hindi nakakaintindi sa kanilang mga pinipirma ng ating mga kababayan. Alam na alam po ng ating mga kababayan, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, na isa po nilang karapatan ang magparticipate sa mga ganitong klaseng political exercise because no less than our Constitution says so, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. So sa aking paniwala, sa aking personal na opinyon, gaya ng aking kasamahan, distinguished colleague Janet Green, na ito po ay malaking insulto at isang...
Sampal?
Let's put it that way, Madam Speaker. It's ang malaking insulto at sampal sa kaalaman at kaisipan ng ating mga mamamayan. Ladong-lalong na po 'yung masigasig pong sumuporta at pumirma po dito sa sinasabing People's Initiative.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, is it wrong to aspire that our country will be globally competitive with other neighboring Asian countries?
Definitely not, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, because dapat po tayo'y magtulong-tulong nang sa ganun ay umasenso at pumunta sa isang maunlad na estado ang ating bansa. Wala po tayong ibang dapat hangarin kundili kung hindi na dapat umasenso ang ating mga kababayan, umasenso ang ating bansa.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, mali po bang hangarin natin nang magkaroon ng mas malawak at toong investors on power dahil kami po sa Visayas ay pagod na pagod na sa paulit-ulit na brownout dahil nga takot o mekaba ang ibang investors na pumasok dito because some of our laws are restrictive?
That is correct, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. Kaya nga po, dapat po nating revisit, tingnan, pag-aralan kung ano ang mga paraan para tayo po ay makapag-ingganyo na mga dayuhang investor sa sektor na napakaimportante sa buhay ng bawat Filipino. Kagaya po ng nabanggit ninyo, 'yung power sector ay malaking bahagi po ng buhay ng bawat Filipino.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, tama po ba na minsan in a way of skirting the laws, we tolerate allegedly? Dummies are tolerated?
Well, yeah, I am familiar with some of the companies that were registered, but we're just using dummies.
Ibig ba sabihin, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, because investors would like to help our country, there are some who would be forced to use dummies simply because our laws have made investment in the Philippines highly restrictive?
That is correct, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. Kaya nga po, gusto po nating buksan ang ating ekonomiya nang sa ganun po ay tayo maging competitive sa ating mga kapit-bansa sa Asya. Tayo po ay naiwan na dahil po mismo sa Vietnam na kung saan ay kommunismo o kommunista ang kanilang gobyerno ay pumapayan sa mga pagpasok na mga dayuhang investor sa kanilang bansa na walang restrictions, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, will the Honorable Ace Barberz agree with me in saying that we really have a lot of great Filipino scientists? Unfortunately, multinationals is a billion investment and research is a multi-billion investment that cannot be afforded by a single country but is usually a collaboration of many investors. At dahil dito, walang napupunta sa Pilipinas dahil 'yung pangamba nila na sila'y magnenegosyo pero ilalagay nila sa pangalan ng iba, that is already the number-one deterrent for investors to come into our country.
Tama po yan, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. In fact, marami pa ho sana ang gustong pumasok bilang investor sa ating bansa, pero alam po nila na napaka-prohibitive at restrictive 'yung proviso ng ating bata sa ating Saligang Batas na hanggang 40% lamang po ang kanilang pwedeng maging pagmamayari. Kaya nga po, instead of getting the quality investors that we all want, nang sa ganun ay makapagbigay ng trabaho at income sa ating bansa at sa ating mga kababayan, eh ito po ay napipigilan at ito po ay nagahanap na lang ng ibang pupuntahan nila sa Asya. Kaya po, we missed several opportunities, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, pagdating po sa pag-ingganyo ng ating mga dayuhang investors dito sa ating bansa.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, will Honorable Barberz agree with me that even in Africa and even in Cambodia and even in our neighboring Asian countries, when we talk about mining and exploration of natural, responsible mining, is it not that most of these companies are actually hiring Filipinos?
That is correct, Madam Speaker. In fact, marami pong mga mining companies nasa Canada, nasa Australia, at nasa Africa na ang kanilang laborers, ang kanilang significant percentage of their employees are Filipinos. Ito po ay lumayo sa kanilang pamilya dito, nagtrabaho sa ibang bansa nang sa ganun eh magkaroon po ng kita na pwede pong magamit ng kanilang pamilya. And that is the reason, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, that when we decide to finally open the economy to investors, it will no longer be a problem for our Filipinos because there will be certainly a lot of job opportunities.
In other words, Madam Speaker, do I get it right that the Honorable Ace Barberz is saying that we are taking care of our Filipinos from birth up to education, but we are not opening the doors for them to develop as managers in their own homeland that they will be professionally successful with their families by my side dahil kailangan nila mga ibang bansa?
That is correct, Madam Speaker. In fact, 'yung pangingibang bansa ay hindi po masama, pero kapagka ang ating bansa ay wala pong oportunidad para sa ating mga kababayan, sila po ay naghanap ng ibang oportunidad outside of the country. Ito po ay hindi masama, ngunit meron pong social cost po ito. Ano po ang social cost? Maaaring nagkaroon ng depresya sa pamilya. At this may have an effect, perhaps, to the children of the parents who are away while the children are growing up. So marami pong social cost na pwedeng maidulot 'yung pangingibang bansa dahil lamang po sa paghanap ng trabaho. Kaya nga po, malaking bagay na dapat pag-isipan, tutukan natin na magkaroon ng maraming oportunidad para sa ating mga kababayan dito sa ating bansa.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, kanina nasabi ni Kagalanggalang Ace Barberz na ayaw naman nating, I mean, we respect the Senate. I mean, I look up on them as our ates and kuyas. However, the way that the two Houses works has been designed in such a way that anything that is good, if unpopular, it is something that cannot be tackled by Senate.
Well, gaya po ng nabanggit ko sa aking speech, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, that I have all the praises for the members of the Senate, including the Senate President, for being consensus in their work. We definitely, it is obvious that we have different opinions, especially on the issue of amending the Constitution. But let us not resort to brick bots. Let us not resort to bickeries. Let us not resort to name-callings. Siguro pinakamaganda eh umupo tayo, mag-usap tayo. Kung ayaw niyo 'yung pinopropose namin, pakiking ka naman ho namin 'yung inyong pinopropose. At baka sa ganung pamamaraan eh magkaroon tayo ng halfway at doon natin magawa 'yung gusto natin na kung saan parehas tayong naniniwala. I am sure, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, that majority of our senators today have all the intention to help this country and look into the possibility of amending the Constitution. Iba lang 'yung kanilang pamamaraan na naisip sa ating pamaraan na isip. Kaya nga, that should not stop us from communicating and discussing because we may agree to disagree at the end of the day.
Precisely, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Hindi po ba tila ang nangyayari eh pilit na pinuputol 'yung komunikasyon na dapat naman the proper way, the proper decorum of legislators is actually to talk as one body? We may disagree on many matters, but it is always a venue to discuss, listen to our people, and decide on what is best for our people. Hindi po ba mas magiging maganda sana na tayo'y umupo, pag-usapan, whether informally or formally, 'yung mga nangyayari? Kasi Madam Speaker, if the Honorable Ace Barbers will allow it, let's laymanize the situation sa dalawang mag-asawa. Hindi po ba 'yung mag-asawa, si nanay at si tatay, ay dapat nag-uusap? At hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, na 'yung mag-asawang hindi nag-uusap ay nagkakaroon ng miscommunication at pwedeng maghiwalay? At hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, pangkaraniwan na nagpapaaway sa isang mag-asawa ay ang mga marites sa palibot?
Totoo po yan, Madam Speaker.
And Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, will the Honorable Barbers as a father attest to the fact that communication is one of the greatest bonds that allows couples to unite, coexist, and live happily ever after with their children's future foremost in their minds?
Well, in my case, Madam Speaker, we have an open communication in my house. And to tell you an example, I always say yes. That's the only thing I say, so that the communication is open. But you know, stressing the point of the distinguished colleague, Congresswoman Janet Green, yes, indeed, communication is the key. And just like us in Congress, we must communicate, but there's a kolatilya. 'Yung ating communication should be diplomatic. That's not resort to name-colling. Diba? We're all public servants and we should inspire those who wants to become public servants in the future. But if they see people saying nasty things about their colleagues, eh baka hindi ma-inspire and instead eh hindi makapagbigay ng magandang model o modelo sa ating kabataan.
Well, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, tama po yun. Kasi sa bangayang ito, sa awayang ito, sa mga tapunan ng salitang hindi na maganda, the ultimate losers will be the Filipino people. Mind you, Madam Speaker, when the news came out na binibili ng tigisang daan ang bawat pirma, nagulat ako at naisip ko baka ako na lang 'yung taong hindi nakakaalam nito because I never felt it. And true enough, it was the same in the other areas. But mind you, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, naririnig ko sa mga bata ang kataga, totoo ba yun? Kasi marami naman, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, if the Honorable Ace Barbers can attest to that, marami ang gumagastos at namimili ng boto pero natatalo kapag ang kanilang kapakanan ay hindi para sa tao. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ang dami nating narinig na katagang masasakit. Katagang lalong nagpapasama sa pananaw ng ibang mga tao sa ating mga Pilipino. Mga katagang nagpapaaway kesa na magmahalan. So Madam Speaker, I still believe with due respect to our colleagues in the Senate that deep behind those words is actually an open heart. So may I join the appeal of the Honorable Ace Barbers that we call on our brothers and sisters in Senate, in the Senate, that we all come together as responsible legislators discussing facts versus needs? At 'yung mga marites na yan ay dapat talagang pag-usapan because communicating and a very good communication between the two houses is something that we owe to our people. Again, Madam Speaker, my congratulations to Congressman Ace Barbers for standing up because his voice is the voice of the majority of the members of this Congress. Maraming salamat.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, distinguished colleague, Congresswoman Janet Green, for that statement.
Thank you, Honorable Janet Green, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ace Barbers and manifestation and interpretation of Congresswoman Janet Green to the committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, at this point, we'd like to recognize the visitors of Representative Christopher Coco Yap of the Second District of Southern Leyte. Our guests Jesse Anpunsalan Del Prado, the Vice Mayor of Santa Fe, Ramblon, Grasty Malolos, Dennis de los Reyes, Reggie Gallos, and Merian Gersi Roma.
To the guest of the Honorable Christopher Coco M. Yap from the Second District of Southern Leyte, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, after finishing all our businesses of the day, we'd like to move our session for adjournment.
There is a motion to adjourn session. Is there any objection? The chair is none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow 3:00 P.M.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Inishere.